Our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're here again to partake of the spiritual food you have prepared for us tonight. Thank you for the opportunity you have made available to us to benefit from your word. As we study your word, may it continue to be a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. For indeed, the lessons that we learn from our study of the Bible are to remind us of how you want us to live. Speak to us tonight, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, the title of our study is David on the Run. David on the Run, and it will take us through First Samuel, chapters eighteen to twenty. First Samuel, chapters eighteen to twenty. But I'm not going to read all the passages. That's why I always think it is important for us to to have read the prescribed chapters even before the teaching. Because then it makes it very easy to follow my teaching. But for now, we're going to start by reading the first sixteen verses of chapter eighteen. First Samuel eighteen, the first sixteen verses. Now, when he had finished speaking to Saul, the soul of Jonathan was knit to the soul of David. And Jonathan loved him as his own soul. Saul took him that day and would not let him go home to his father's house anymore. Then Jonathan and David made a covenant, because he loved him as his own soul. And Jonathan took off the robe that was on him and gave it to David with a ramo, even to his sword and his bow and his belt. So David went out wherever Saul sent him and behaved wisely. And Saul set him over the men of war. And he was accepted in the sight of all the people and also in the sight of Saul's servants. Now it happened, as they were coming home, that David was returning from the slaughter of the Philistines. That the women had come out of all the cities of Israel, singing and dancing to meet King Saul, with tambourines and with joy, with musical instruments. So the women sang as they danced and said, Saul has slain his thousands, and David his ten thousands. Then Saul was very angry, and the saying displeased him. And he said, they have ascribed to David ten thousands, and to me they have ascribed only thousands. Now, what more can he have but the kingdom? So Saul eyed David from that day forward. And it happened on the next day that a distressing spirit from God came upon Saul and prophesied inside the house. So David played music with his hand as at other times. But there was a spear in Saul's hand. And Saul cast the spear, for he said, I will pin David to the wall. But David escaped his presence twice. Now Saul was afraid of David, because the Lord was with him, but had departed from Saul. Therefore Saul removed him from his presence and made him his captain over a thousand. And he went out and came in before the people. And David behaved wisely in all his ways, and the Lord was with him. Therefore, when Saul saw that he behaved very wisely, he was afraid of him. But all Israel and Judah loved David, because he went out and came in before them. In chapter seventeen, we read how a young teenage boy, David, won an astounding victory over the intimidating Philistine giant Goliath. No one expected that David would fight against Goliath and kill him. David was the only one who knew he could conquer Goliath because of his unwavering faith and trust in a God who had proved himself to him before that he was his deliverer. He courageously handed the battle to the Lord, and God again proved himself. He was able to learn from that very familiar, we were very, we were able to learn from that very familiar story, how to fight our own giants. Saul was obviously impressed with David's victory over Goliath and inquired about his father. Tell me about your father, my boy, Saul said. And David replied, his name is Jesse, and we live in Bethlehem. David met Jonathan, and they became close friends. Their friendship is one of the deepest and closest recorded in the Bible. Saul kept David in the palace and wouldn't let him return home. Even though Jonathan was from the royal family and the expected heir to the throne, and David was the son of a poor man, the Bible says that Jonathan loved David as his own soul. He even made a covenant with him. This was a mutual agreement that they would care for each other's needs. And Jonathan took off his robe and gave it to David, together with his ramo and his sword, his bow and his belt. Why? Jonathan ratified his covenant with David. This action symbolized a transfer of royal power from Saul's family to David. It was an acknowledgement of the fact that David was likely to be the next king of Israel. In First Samuel twenty-three seventeen, First Samuel twenty-three seventeen, Jonathan said to David, do not fear, for the hand of Saul, my father, shall not find you. You shall be king over Israel, and I shall be next to you. Even my father knows this. These words were coming from the mouth of someone who himself ought to be king after his father, and who might have been envious of David. Here was he encouraging his friend. Both men had a fervent love for God. And Jonathan encouraged David to continue his obedient work with God. He recognized that David was destined to be the next king of Israel and was content to take this second place after him, because he knew it was God's will. What an example of true love in friendship. The Bible says that love does not envy, First Corinthians thirteen fourteen, First Corinthians thirteen four, I'm sorry. Saul, impressed by David's victory over Goliath, made him the commander of his army. But his admiration for David did not last long, as people began to applaud David's exploits. He was particularly infuriated by the song that the women sang to welcome the Israelite army as they were returning from battle. Saul has slain his thousands, but David his ten thousands. Listen to Saul's words. They have ascribed to David ten thousands, and to me only thousands. Now what more can he have but the kingdom? Saul became jealous of David's popularity and tried to kill him. As David was playing music to soothe Saul from the evil spirit that tormented him, he threw a spear at him, intending to pin him to the wall. But David escaped. Saul did this twice. But God saved him. In fact, Saul became afraid of David, because he saw that the Lord was with him. David's relationship with God was the key to his success. Verse fourteen reads, and David behaved himself wisely in all his ways. And the Lord was with him. This reminds us of Joseph, who prospered in all that he did, because the Lord was with him. Genesis thirty-nine twenty-three, Genesis thirty-nine twenty-three. Saul's jealousy grew. Jealousy is a dangerous thing. Proverbs twenty-seven verse four, Proverbs twenty-seven verse four says, wrath is cruel, anger is overwhelming, but who can stand jealousy? When jealousy is left uncontrolled, it grows into bitterness, hatred, and murder. This is what was happening to Saul. He was bent on killing David, not because of anything he had done, but because he saw David as a threat. As his reputation was growing among the people, while his own was diminishing. David's successful military engagements gained him increasing honor and recognition. Saul offered to give his older daughter to David, if only he would continue to fight God's battles. But he had an ulterior motive. He was hoping that the Philistines would kill David in battle. He thought that would be better than killing him himself. However, he gave his older daughter to another man. But Saul's younger daughter, Michal, was in love with David. So Saul demanded, instead of dowry, a hundred foreskins of the Philistines. David brought him two hundred. So Michal became David's wife, and Saul became even more afraid of David and became his enemy for the rest of his life. Now let's move on to chapter nineteen. Chapter nineteen, we've just finished talking about chapter eighteen. Chapter nineteen, I'm going to read the first seven verses. Now Saul spoke to Jonathan, his son, and to all his servants, that they should kill David. But Jonathan, Saul's son, delighted greatly in David. So Jonathan told David, saying, my father seeks to kill you. Therefore, please be on your guard until morning and stay in a secret place and hide. And I will go out and stand beside my father in the field where you are, and I will speak with my father about you. Then what I observe, I will tell you. Thus Jonathan spoke well of David to Saul, his father, and said to him, let not the king sin against his servant, against David, because he has not sinned against you, and because his works have been very good towards you. For he took his life in his hands and killed the Philistine. And the Lord brought about a great deliverance of all Israel. You saw it and rejoiced. Why then were you sin against the innocent blood to kill David without a cause? So David hid at the voice of Jonathan and swore, as the Lord lives, he shall not be killed. Then Jonathan called David, and Jonathan told him all these things. So Jonathan brought David to Saul, and he was in his presence as in times past. Excuse me. In this chapter, we read about more attempts of Saul to kill David. He tried to bring in others to join him in his plot to kill David. He told his son Jonathan and all his servants. But Jonathan, loyal to his covenant of friendship, told David of his father's hatred for him and advised him to hide while he pledged to intervene on his behalf before his father. In verses four to five, which we have just read, Jonathan argued strongly on David's behalf, telling his father that David's actions had demonstrated loyalty to Saul, and therefore he had no just cause to kill him. Saul listened and swore he would not kill David. Jonathan had spoken to his father the way he did, not because he loved David, not just because he loved David, but also because he loved the truth. He stood up to his father, even at the expense of his life. He was able to convince his father, if only for a while, and David returned to the palace. But Saul's hatred for David did not allow him to keep his word. He threw a spear at David again, and now David fled permanently. But Saul did not relent. He sent messengers to David's house to bring him. But his wife Michal helped David to escape by climbing a window. She deceived the messengers by putting an image with a goat's, with a goat's hair in his head on the bed, saying David was sick. David sent the messengers back to bring him, sick as he was, only for them to discover that they had been deceived. Saul was angry at his daughter. Why have you deceived me? He's, he said, and sent my enemy away, so that he has escaped. David, Saul's enemy? What did David do to earn that title from Saul? Nothing. That is what jealousy does. David fled to Neth in Ramah to see Samuel and to tell him all that Saul had done to him. He stayed with Samuel in Neth. When Saul heard that he was at Neth, he sent messengers to capture him. When they got to Samuel's place and saw a group of prophets prophesying, the spirit of the Lord came upon them, and they too prophesied. When Saul was told, he sent a second set of messengers, and they too prophesied. The same thing happened to a third batch. So Saul himself went to Neth. But on his way, the spirit of God came upon him, and he began to prophesy until he got to Neth. There, he took off his outer garment and lay on the ground and prophesied all day and night. Therefore, people asked, is Saul also among the prophets? This was the second time Saul was prophesying. The first time was when he was anointed king. This time, however, Saul was consumed with jealousy over David's growing popularity, and he wanted to kill him. To stop the messengers, God overpowered them with his presence and changed their evil intentions. The spirit later overpowered Saul and made him lay in trance all day and night. The fact that he was overpowered by the Holy Spirit does not mean that he was in a right relationship with God. As a matter of fact, he was in rebellion against God. It was God's way of stopping Saul from killing David. He turned the will-be assassins into worshippers. Saul should have realized that he was not just attacking David, but he was also attacking God's plan for David and his people, the nation of Israel. Jesus said to Saul on his way to Damascus to arrest Christians, Saul, Saul, why are you persecuting me? Acts nine four, Acts nine four. God will always protect his own people. We must be careful not to rebel against God. And finally, we move to the last chapter for tonight, chapter twenty, chapter twenty. David fled from Neth in Ramah and went to speak to Jonathan. What have I done? What is my iniquity? And what is my sin before your father that he seeks my life? David complained. One would have thought that Saul would have given up his desire to kill David. At least he had given Jonathan his word in chapter nineteen verse six, that David would not be killed. But he had not kept his word. He continued in his sin. We can see that for David, the journey to the throne of Israel was not going to be easy. It was going to be full of trials, and it was going to take a very long time, at least more than a decade. So here we find him complaining to Jonathan, a loyal and trustworthy friend that God had given to him. We can see that David is terribly afraid. Proverbs twenty-nine verse twenty-five, Proverbs twenty-nine twenty-five says, the fear of man brings a snare, but whoever trusts in the Lord shall be safe. And Psalm fifty-six verse three says, whenever I am afraid, I will trust in you. Trusting in God is what makes you know what to do and what not to do. What was happening to David? Why did he flee? He was only being human. He was discouraged. David, the giant killer. David, who had won several victories over the Philistines. He said to Jonathan, truly, as the Lord lives and as your soul lives, there is but a step between me and death. He might have been thinking, if Saul continues to hunt me like this, I may never be king, I may never fulfill God's destiny for my life. But God had a different plan for him, and Saul could not stop God's plan for David. Acts thirteen, thirteen verse thirty-six, Acts thirteen thirty-six says, for David, after he has served his generation by the will of God, fell asleep and was buried with his fathers. He lived to a ripe old age. We must never forget the sovereignty of God, no matter what we may be going through. Jonathan had difficulty in believing. He was perplexed. He promised his loyalty to David and remained committed to him. He was a constant and reliable friend. He was there for David, even at the risk of his own life. He loved the truth. That was why he confronted his father earlier in chapter nineteen. So he and David made a plan so that David would know whether his father wanted to kill him or not, and inform David so that he would take, he could take necessary action. I want us to read verses fifteen, eleven to fifteen of chapter twenty. Eleven to fifteen of chapter twenty. And Jonathan said to David, come, let's go out into the field. So both of them went out into the field. Then Jonathan said to David, the Lord God of Israel is my witness. When I have sounded out my father sometime tomorrow or the third day, and indeed there is good towards David, and I do not send to you and tell you, may the Lord do so and much more, to Jonathan. But if it pleases my father to do you evil, then I will report it to you and send you away, that you may go in safety. And the Lord be with you as he has been with my father. And you shall not only show me the kindness of the Lord while I still live, that I may not die, but you shall not cut off your kindness from my house forever. No, not when the Lord has cut off every one of the enemies of David from the face of the earth. So Jonathan made a covenant with the house of David, saying, let the Lord require it at the hand of David's enemies. Jonathan made a request from David, if he would have to run away. Jonathan made a request from David, if he would have to run away. Both Jonathan and David were appealing to their covenant of friendship. No matter what might happen between Saul and David, Jonathan appealed to David to be kind to his own descendants when God had cut off his enemies and he was king. David fulfilled his request, as we shall see later in Second Samuel, chapter nine. David would hide in the fields. This was their plan. David would hide in the fields and be absent from the king's feast for the new moon, and Jonathan would watch Saul's reaction. David was absent two days running, and Jonathan spoke on his behalf. Saul's reaction is found in verses thirty to thirty-one of chapter twenty. That is, after David had been absent from the feast for two days running. Verse thirty, then Saul's anger was aroused against Jonathan, and he said to him, you son of a perverse rebellious woman. Do I not know that you have chosen the son of Jesse to your own shame? And the shame and mo- and your mother of your mother's nakedness? For as long as the son of Jesse lives on my earth, you shall not be established, nor your kingdom. Now therefore send and bring him to me, for he shall surely die. So the reaction, we have seen, we have seen Saul's reaction. And when Jonathan confronted his father and said, why should he be killed? What has he done? Saul threw a spear at him, at his own son, to kill him. Jonathan had to leave the table in anger. He ate no food, because he was grieved for David, and because of the shameful way that his father had treated him. The next morning, Jonathan went to communicate the sad news to David, as they had already planned. Yes, it was true. Saul was bent on killing David, and he had to run for his life. It was a very painful and moving parting between the two of them, as verses forty-one to forty-two tells. David was to leave his home, his loyal and faithful friend Jonathan behind, and live as a fugitive because of a mad jealous king. He will not return to a normal life until Saul was dead. And we are talking about ten to fifteen years. David had to learn how to make God his defense. It was during this period that he wrote some of his Psalms, which we shall discuss as we go on. But it is believed that it was during this period that we have just discussed, that he wrote Psalm fifty-nine, which I want us to turn to, Psalm fifty-nine. I'm just going to read a few verses from Psalm fifty-nine. Psalm fifty-nine. Deliver me from my enemies, O my God. Defend me from those who rise up against me. Deliver me from the workers of iniquity, and save me from bloodthirsty men. For look, they lie in wait for my life. The mighty gather against me, not for my transgression, nor my sin, O Lord. They run and prepare themselves, through no fault of mine. Awake and help me, and behold. You therefore, O Lord, of hosts, the God of Israel, awake to punish all the nations. Do not be merciful to any wicked transgressors. But towards the end, allow us to re-read the last two verses. Even though he was complaining to God and asking him to deliver him, he was still praising him. He was still determined to praise God even during this trial. Verse sixteen says, but I will sing of your power. Yes, I will sing aloud of your mercy in the morning, for you have been my defense. To you, O my strength, I will sing praises, for God is my defense, my God of mercy. What an example for us, when we go through trials, we should not stop praising God. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our study tonight, and how you have spoken to us through your word. Thank you for your plans for us. We do not know how these plans will unfold, and we may not, we may have to go through trials and difficulties before we arrive at the goals you have for us. Help us to trust you, especially when we don't understand why the unexpected begins to happen to us. For we know that according to Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven, your thoughts towards us are of peace and not of evil, to give us a future and a hope. Thank you, our Father, we give you praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Join us next time when we continue with our study of David on the Run. Please read First Samuel, chapters twenty-one to twenty-three. First Samuel, chapters twenty-one to twenty-three. Good night.